Welcome to the 40th of February 20th, 2014. Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Here.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Here.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Here.
Ed Cordino?
Here.
Philip Downmeyer?
Here.
David McMahon?
Here.
Deborah Purnia?
Here.
Okay, so move to the flag.
Let's all meet and see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors?
Mr. Potter?
Oh, his bike is, um, recoupling that was your favorite.
Alright, hope you feel better, Mrs. Potter.
Absolutely.
Case student representatives.
Sure, prices. Bear with me. So, first off, during the month of February, the school's new diversity club viewed the movie Forty-two, which, as you might know, reviews the life and career of famous baseball player Jackie Robinson. There were two after-school meetings held in which members viewed and discussed the various aspects of the film. Secondly, sophomores have scheduled to complete the cap science test tomorrow on March 21st. Review sessions have been held after school for the past two weeks for the sophomores, and in addition to classroom preparation during freshman general science classes and sophomore biology classes. Project Graduation hosted their annual March Madness basketball tournament last week, the week of the 10th, which was coordinated once again by Luke Swetzer. And all proceeds from the tournament are used toward an event held on graduation in June. And MBHS high school music program participated in the North Ramford Music Spectrum Concerts on March 4th and 6th. Students provide spectators with the sampling of work being completed within the curriculum and sections performed during other public events. High school groups were led by department members, Ms. Katie Traynor and Mr. Michael Karolyi. On March 14th... Do I drop in here?
Yeah, sure. So, sorry about that.
Okay.
We did the first one.
Yes.
Uh, 4th and 6th, you did that. Alright, sorry. So, March 14th, the Anti-Defamation League's Names Committee Heritage Program was held. And the day started off with an assembly. Freshmen, sophomores, and juniors attended. Then students broke up into small groups facilitated by staff and students. And the day ended with some closing remarks back in the auditorium. And open mic type of thing went really well. And I just gotta say, I'm a junior, and out of the three years that I've been in high school, this was the most effective and moving program I have ever seen happen. And we all know at the high school, a lot of kids can tend to lack maturity sometimes. And just the focus, and it was, it was really there. It was a surprise to, uh, to see. So that went really well. And then lastly, tomorrow, um, at the high school is the annual blood drive sponsored by American Red Cross. And Student Council runs it. Students who are willing to donate have to pass a age and a screening requirement, and then they can donate as a great way to save some lives, get involved.
Do you know how many kids usually do that on average?
Don't any? Um, usually around sixty.
Wow.
So it's actually usually a really good turnout.
Yeah, usually around seventy, seventy-five.
That's great.
Yeah, it's great.
It's a great turnout.
Thank you guys. That was impressive, you jumped in right on. You didn't miss a beat. Not at all.
So sorry.
I was trying to cover for you, but he was rushing me and yelling at me because we started late.
Sorry, I appreciate it.
No foul. Now, if you want, you can go home and study for the meeting. Or you can say, listen, I was, it's fine. Okay, we'll move on to approval minutes. February 6th, 2014.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 6th, 2014 budget workshop as submitted.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Can I just ask, um, here, I need a correction. Three or five, the paragraph down about, about you, Lou. Chairman Paternoster stated that the town, I know Lou took a big kick about that paragraph. I was the one that initially brought it up. I just wanted to note it that I was the one that initiated the conversation about the safety concerns in the auditorium. I know, I know, he had a hard time about that, so, um, other than that, I think it's three. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Stay.
Philip Downmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Okay, February 20th, 2014, by 20.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th, 2014 Board of Education's special meeting as submitted. I'll second that.
Any discussion, please?
Yeah, me again. I'm sorry. Must have been bored. On page five of nine, the paragraph, um, ran the motion. I had noted no to this, and I clearly stand by my vote, but I had discussion prior to the vote that I didn't think that this figure was high enough. And that could just be noted.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Personnel presentations. Right this time. Appointments. The superintendent has received recommendation from the administration for the following three coaching positions at North Ramford Intermediate School. Boys' baseball coach, Bruno Castaldi. Girls' softball coach, Pete Ramada.
I make a motion to approve the above two coaching positions as recommended by intermediate school administration.
I'll second it.
Roll call, sorry, discussion?
Yes, I have a quick question. Um, are we now approving positions before the season for only new coaches? Or all, isn't there a question of all about that?
These are for NBIS, for sophomore and baseball for this spring, of current season.
But I don't think we approved even the winter sports or the, or the whole list of spring.
Yes, we did. We had Ramada, and we had Joey Lasco, and Johnny Lasco all, all next time. We did do Mitch, the intermediate school.
Okay.
And then they had Joey for the, we had that little confusion.
Oh, right, right, you're right. So we're just doing them for NBIS?
Uh, this is all I perceive right now.
Okay.
So will we see, say, Billy Mitchell for baseball, and when you, when you got your all set, right? Okay, that's fine.
I didn't think we were just, I didn't really know.
Hasn't there been some changes to that about, um, their, their entitlement to the process if they, there's been some state changes or something, so... So, does it, is it assumed, or is it protocol that they remain the coaches unless something comes up, so that we won't have to approve it every year, or...
Typically, we still do our annual appointment.
Okay.
The, the, the three-year rule is basically if, after a coach has done three years, if you do not intend to bring them back, then you have to notify them within ninety days of the end of their season that you're not going to offer them a coaching position for the following year. And then they have some...
Like due process.
Rights, yes, which I don't really recall exactly what they are. Um, but that's the way that works, so. It doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, somebody could be coached for four years and then decide they don't want to do it anymore, so you still need new coach.
Right, right, okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
I do want to add that Bruno Castaldi was one of the three shining star recipients this past week, so it was nice to have him as a coach and also a very key member of the community.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, attached, the board of ed briefs are there. I'm not gonna go through them, but as you can see, as I always state, the buildings are alive and busy. They're coming off many exciting fundraising events. The Jump Rock with the Heart we reported on last week, I think the district raised over twenty-seven thousand dollars between Jerome and Tucut. They had a very successful week across America. The convention convention is tomorrow at TBS.
It's a week from tomorrow, we had to postpone, I think it was a field trip.
It's postponed for a week because of the field trip, but I was gonna show up tomorrow at nine, so I'm... I'm still... But, um, the, the high school is obviously very busy with assessing cap tomorrow. They had an alternative schedule today. They ran a non-traditional eight-period day. Some of the students were commenting how they felt lost because they were so used to having age block during this period and then having forty-two-minute classes when they're usually four. So they're doing a great job of accommodating some of the stressors of getting the cap testing in and moving forward with Common Core. So if there's any questions, administrative team are here to see you, feel free to ask. Okay, we have no field trips at this time for approval. And non-residents, under state statute, for non-tenure certified staff must meet the deadline of, of, and of April, so all information is forward from that status stance. Moving along, our budget request, as you are well aware, we presented to the town council at our Saturday workshop involving capital requests. April 1st, we have our first public hearing and budget workshop at seven o'clock at the NBIS cafeteria. We're hoping to have a large turnout that evening. As we've stated many times, how critical this budget is moving forward with some of the challenges that we are facing with implementing Common Core and transitioning in, and how important it is to maintain our teaching staff to, to provide an education that's optimal for teaching and learning for our youngsters. So that's an encouragement for all to come out and able, first, to, to share your thoughts about the school system and hear more about what's in this budget.
Are we able to do a connect ed call just to let people know?
We are. We, we will put something out, and we'll have a handout that evening for the community members so that they, those who weren't present at our PowerPoint or do not watch this on TV, that's a part of watching this on TV, we will have the ability to hand that PowerPoint.
Because I think...
And, and obviously put it over the...
Right, because I think in the past, there was confusion, and people didn't realize that that was their only night to speak.
Right.
Unless they've changed, unless the town council's changed it, when they do their budget deliberations, they don't take public comment.
No, April 1st is the night to come out.
People, I think, didn't realize that in the past, so just to, we're letting them know that that's their only opportunity to speak.
Right. April 1st is the one time for the community members to come out and share their concerns. Seven o'clock, NBIS. Okay, and there's four dates there, the second date, and then the ninth, the budget deliberations, and then obviously those are if needed. As far as a connect ed, I wanna double-check one thing because they did change the rules on the use of that. I think it's only for voting. Um, but the, the theory was that if you send the connect ed through the school system, then only parents get notified of whatever the event is. Right.
Right.
And you exclude the rest of the community. So they actually made it illegal to use the connect ed for education only in some circumstances. They may also do the reverse 911s from the town, which, you know, they're free to do because that covers everybody.
So can we just, um, scry a email or something to Mike Paulus requesting that?
The reverse 911.
Because if we don't have the ability to make that, then it goes out online.
Sure. And I'm sure the...
Is that due on a Tuesday?
That did come there.
Yeah, right, not Tuesday. You know, maybe once or twice before the meeting, after. Just so we have it in writing every month to get...
Any questions regarding the budget, meeting dates, locations? First ones at NBIS, April 1st, seven p.m., right? Those after town hall. This GASSA Student Award Lunch, and I was honored and privileged to be present on March 14th. Dr. Wells was also present, Dr. Lindsay and Mr. Davis, which recognized six of our outstanding students. I've listed them here tonight. Sofia Anastasio, Ethan Sibena, Kaylee Malillo, Christopher Candelora, Christina Gange, and Kevin Sullivan were our six students. And we had a wonderful day. There were over three hundred at this event from eighteen different towns. And it was an honor to be there, and I know how proud the administrators were to, to bring up these outstanding students. So congratulations to all of them. The Drama Club production will present Oliver, and there's a brief write-up, which plenty of you are familiar with. I'm not gonna read that to you, but the students put an incredible amount of time, energy, and effort into their productions, so if you are available on April 4th at seven o'clock, or Saturday, April 5th at one for a matinee in the minute seven in the evening, and our autoplane tickets are available prior to the show. The prices are listed there, and it really is, some of us like to see with all the work being done behind the scenes by our tech crew. The middle school was involved with the production and assisting. The music department is involved, so it really is a school-community event, and the kids put in hundreds and hundreds of hours in preparation for this. And we literally have hundreds of kids involved when you look at everything that goes into it. So mark your calendars, and if you need tickets, you can come to the high school or call central office, I'll make sure you have tickets. Okay? It's nice to talk about summer camp after the winter that we had. It's themed this year as Survivor Camp. We are now running the camp again at Tucut Valley Elementary School. And everything will be done online, as we've done the last two years. Students, parents, excuse me, register online, pay online. The program will be going up. Due to the fact that we started the camp later with our now last-day school, I think on the 23rd, it will run an extra week in the summer. So we'll still run full, eight weeks, eight weeks of camp. And the kids will have that experience.
So starting the week of the fourth.
The 30th. The week following, the first full week following. So any questions on, on any other reports? That's all I have left to say.
Committee reports, negotiations, we're gonna have a full executive session for that. Budget and operations?
Budget, not much has changed. We just have some committee meetings, not much has changed.
Yeah, it's, everything is, everything is in good shape. And our, it appears as though the Special Ed Access Cost Grants are going to cover the projected shortfall that we had earlier on the Special Ed outside situation now.
Curriculum instruction is your key thing.
Well, we had a wonderful little curriculum meeting beforehand, and we, we got a synopsis from the parent meeting about the core curriculum. Talked about a new tentative schedule, a few schedule changes at one of the schools. Of going back to the parent, right? I know it wasn't heavily attended, but there is a lot of talk about people that did attend it and how informative it was, and that it really answered a lot of their questions. And I think that they were misin, not misinformed by the school district, but misinformed through the chains of, of, of some of these information, and clarified it a lot.
No, I, I agree with, with those comments. Obviously, this has drawn a great deal of attention on a national level, and many states are reacting differently. And, and the educational world as a whole has adjusted to this, and we're trying to, as the governor, I think, described, drinking water out of a fire hose. And he's backed off and pushed some of the timelines out, which, you know, we've been frantically working diligently to stay with and be ready to roll this out. And we're continuing to do that. The, the change in the HSBAC testing dates did not affect us. We were not scheduled to test during that first week in March, so we're moving along. Our plan is in place. Our administrators are evaluating teachers based on the core, and our core is fully implemented, and the benchmark results are coming in. And we're able to tweak and move and adjust, and we'll continue to do that right away, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Wood, for your presentation on that.
Thank you. Will be available on June 19th at some point in the near future. And thank you to TJ for videotaping that and helping us facilitate it. Great.
Okay, move on to pension. No meeting. Ready, move on to policy.
We didn't need in March, but we do have one policy to go forward with for second reading and approval. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy T for the R70, school visitors as submitted.
I'll second that.
I think it was the tie, I can't...
I'm gonna go, go.
I'm just waiting for us to get any discussion.
I'm going with that. Any discussion, please?
Um, has anything changed, or is this just...
It, it was the ability for the different schools to have flexibility in how they were checking. The old policy actually required you to check in at the principal's office, which now with the security desks is no longer really approved. And so we also added the, um, that the protocol is developed by school administration to recognize the fact that it might be different for different schools. So the high school is, is obviously different than Jerome.
So if you don't have a degree in...
Wow.
So the policy that's in here says all school visitors shall register in the principal's office.
Okay, that's the old one.
Okay.
About school visits in cash.
That's the one, it's no longer.
Well, I was just wondering, I'm like, okay, is that gonna be any...
No, I mean, I can go grab a copy of the new one if you...
No, no, that's fine, I just... Until next month, we'll put it away for it.
Well, we always, the old one is in. The new one's not in here.
I didn't see it.
And the, uh... I assume it was in the first read last time, am I right?
Yeah, it says it in the document.
Because we spoke specifically to the differences between the buildings and the rationale for having IDs collected and checked versus at the high school.
In the first read?
See, I don't know where that, because mine is in the closer back. I think you have four things.
I have, I have two words right here.
Awesome.
Do you want, this is short, you want me to just read it, and then we can move forward? Because you don't wanna read it.
Sure. Parents and guardians of students attending the North Ramford Public Schools and Board of Education members are encouraged to visit the North Ramford Public Schools at appropriate times to become acquainted with students, school personnel, and programs. Parents and community members may visit schools with prior approval of the principal and for a specified and approved purpose. All school visitors shall stop at the security desk and will be required to comply with security protocol established by building administration. Staff members should be alert for unauthorized visitors and report their presence to the principal promptly. It is expected that all school visitors will demonstrate proper decorum and not be disruptive of the educational process. Otherwise, school visitors will be asked to leave the school premises. A person who loiterers will remain in or about a school building or grounds without a reason or relationship involved in custody of or responsibility for a student or any other license or privilege to be there is guilty of loitering. Are we good with that? Good.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Rock Aces.
So we met, um, last Thursday, and it's the budget process for them as well, so, uh, whatever each school's budget. Busy, busy time. Um, and there was some legislation, legisla, sure, legislation, oh my goodness, regarding Common Core and, um, regionalizing school calendars. Have you been to this another time?
We've had quite a few communications between the regionalized calendar. It's been a tall task to try to get, you know, the numbers of districts that we can work with to come up with common PD days, indication days, and, you know, how we work with Monday days in February versus towns who do not do that, and the last day of school, and what it would look like, so.
Right, so we reviewed the, um, legislation that they're presenting. Um, and it called for five floating days, a, a specific start date, certain days for, um, the Christmas holiday, for winter break, and, um, April.
Right.
And then Monday and Tuesday for February vacation.
Right.
There, there is some flexibility, but we'll see what happens.
And then next year, it's not gonna be implemented, it's the following.
Right, so the way it reads now is next year is mandatory, so that's one of their recommendations, is that, uh, I'm sorry, for 1516, it's supposed to be mandatory, but they're trying to make that another year.
Building Committee.
I didn't make the meeting. I just made the March meeting. But I do know that the, uh, guy's school roof specs have been completed and it's out on the street for, and they're expecting it back, I believe the first week in April.
There's actually, I was a walk-through today. There was a walk-through today, and according to Bill Chody, it was rather well-attended.
Oh, good.
Did they, did they carry umbrellas for the rain there, or last night?
Communications.
You wanna take a callie?
I wasn't there, person.
That's what you do. Put you on the spot. You wanna make it?
That's right. There's one person on there.
We had a communication committee meeting, um, humble things that, that we need to bring up. Um, one, the town council has requested us to pay for two lights outside of the parking lot with the community center. And, um, it was indications made at the communication meeting that we weren't going to do that, but I said we would bring it to the board, discuss it with the board, and, you know, everybody could weigh in on it. Um, there's grant money coming for the community center, and they wanted to do ten, I think, ten lights. And they decided that we should pay for two of them. And we've been here all this time, and the lights that we have are satisfactory.
We'd actually, we've placed five exterior lights on the building. And the main entrance way, which we access, we have two large lights in the corner of Janais, and then from FRC, we have two built-in lights there, so our needs are being met for what our building usage is at this time.
At this point in time, they have, in my opinion, is they haven't been budgeted for in our budget. We have extra added costs now because we are, are dealing with an arbitration. We don't know exactly what that's gonna, and we don't know what we're gonna have. So, I mean, I don't know if you guys want to put it to a vote, if you just wanna talk about it, but...
Well, I'd like to ask, is this a decision that needs to be made with what budget season's over? Or did we make this decision?
I think they're, I don't know.
I, I don't think that it's dependent on, on the budget, right? So either we agree that we're responsible for two lights, or not, regardless of what happens with budget.
The Building Committee, I think, has made themselves pretty clear on a number of meetings. They said the Board of Ed is not gonna pay for any additional lights.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, we made it pretty clear.
So, so that's how you guys feel, but I feel the same way.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree as well. So, yeah.
I mean, I think we use lights once a month, not for the Board of Ed meeting, really. Who else is the Board of Ed using the lights? In the morning?
We're not really at this building.
We're not, and one night a month we're here. That's it. These people could walk where they want, respond to it.
Shh, you should stay away from that side.
It's not a major... Rather than having to wind it down, why should we pay for somebody else?
Yeah, but why two, to act like...
Well, and that's right, so if there was like a reason for, they have two. One, that we don't want to send in double lighting, that they wanted us...
Well, the thing is, I don't know, ten is an overkill out there, really, to be honest with you.
I think, I think the architect had recommended more than that.
I mean, to me, it's an overkill.
I mean, to me, it's an overkill.
Well, I think the original one was like 14 or something like that.
I'm sure a design engineer came in and did a schematic of a lot and the lighting that would be needed and.
It was like 14 or 15 originally.
I think we're all in agreement that. Well, I said at the communication committee meeting, I, you know, it was lengthy discussion, and I said, well, the bottom line is we bring it to the board and we let the board decide.
Those lights are pretty expensive, too, I mean.
Well, they're $5,000 apiece, they want $10,000.
Oh, I thought they were $25,000.
No, they want $5,000 apiece. So, and anything else from communications? Yes. Another thing that I was asked to make sure that was discussed at this meeting was a suggestion of a made communication committee meeting that, I don't want to use the wrong terms, but there'd be like a lease between the town and the Board of Education defining who's responsible for what in the buildings. And there was discussion about it at the town council meeting, and basically by state statute, that's illegal anyway, so it's a mute issue, but I was asked to make sure it was brought up under communication during the meeting, so I did. It's illegal, we can't do it, so we move on.
Any else?
Nope.
Okay, we move along to new business. Personal matter related to a press question that we go to and make the session for.
Good to the board. I'd like to move to adjourn to a direct.
No, 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 go to the board, go to the board, I have to say to the board. We're doing good to the board first.
See, the good to the board first.
All right. Good to the board.
It's only you. Do you have anything to say? I don't want to talk before you, you're like the Mr. Potter.
Yeah, I, you know, no, I just want to say that. Shut up. I want to say that I think townspeople are really doing really well, they're realizing that this board is really trying to do our best, and they're rallying around us and standing up for us and speaking their mind, and I just want to go tiger on to Mr. Schoolmaker when he said earlier about April 1st. That is your time to come out and speak. You know, right, wrong or indifferent, as a taxpayer, April 1st is your time to express your opinion on this. Keep the scuffle out of the global and all that. Go April 1st and let us know how you stand, let the town council know how you stand, and let your voice be heard. If you don't go April 1st and let your voice be heard, right, wrong or indifferent, hold your peace, but I encourage everyone to come out April 1st, support our budget, and, you know, we're out trying to do the best for the town. And that's it for me. It was easy. Go.
I just wanted to say thank you to this group of people because it was like this time last year that I decided, I'm trying to sit up here, and learned a great deal, and I think we've done a great job being collaborative, all of us, and we don't always agree, but we're always professional about it, so I just wanted to thank. Major, well, so, you did.
We're glad you're here.
Mr. Phil? Yes, I'd like to thank Tracy. She gave us a discussion tonight before the meeting, early, and about the concept of the block scheduling, and I never did understand the block scheduling, but I do now, and I want to thank her very much, it was very good, appreciate it.
Any other good for the board? Visitors are pressed. We get no visitors.
I'd like to recognize Bruce Williams, who's here this evening. I quote, "Right away." As our tech director, I know that you approved him, and I've been joining, but I don't know if I've officially embarrassed him.
Because obviously, it's a lovely.
I want to take this opportunity to introduce and embarrass Bruce this night. I appreciate him being here, and he was obviously at the council meeting the other night as well, and I want to thank him for this.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Go. Next regular.
Our next regular Board of Ed schedule meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April 10th, 2014.
I have to tell it. I have to tell you. Take it away.
Okay, now I'd like to move to adjourn to a direct session as per section 1225 of Connecticut General Statutes, as permitted by section 1206A of Connecticut General Statutes to discuss agenda item 8, non-redeals, item 9, community reports, negotiations related to NBFT arbitration, and item 10, new business personal matter. I'll second that.
Who? Who? Eight, that's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.